Good evening. I'm Rob Walts with the Board Chair and we're here at the December 9th, Cabarrus County Board of Education Business Meeting. And I'd like to introduce the folks on the dais here. We have our Teacher of the Year Caleb Snell. We have Catherine Moore, Board Member. Sam Treadaway, Board Member. Superintendent Dr. Kupicki, Board Vice Chair Greg Mills. Pam Escobar is a Board Member. And Melanie Freeman is a Board Member and our Board Attorney William over there. Any other elected officials in the room to introduce? We had Laura Lindsay, she was here, there she is. Laura, thank you for coming. And then we did have unfortunately, a student who passed away last week, Kaylee Smith, a student at Central Cabarrus High School. Our thoughts and prayers are with her, but we'd like to have a 15-second moment of silence, please. Thank you for participating. We're going to go on to our presentation, our opening ceremony presentation with the color guard, our colors from Mount Pleasant High School ROTC and the National Anthem which is also from Mount Pleasant High School. Please stand with me.
Presenting our nation's colors tonight are members of the Mount Pleasant High School Air Force JROTC program. And their personnel includes Cadet 1st Lieutenant Caleb Edinburgh, Cadet 2nd Lieutenant William Farrell, and Cadet 2nd Lieutenant Justin Scott.
Right face. Forward. Halt.
Honoring America tonight with the playing of our National Anthem, we're members of the Mount Pleasant High School Band. And their personnel includes Abigail Borgemeister, Isabella Corverrubias, Essence Hicks, Sidney Schmidt, Josie Stroud, Grace Wilson, Margaret Garrido, Ella Pfeiffer, Jed Kendall, Aiden Moreland, Jacob Childress, Rose Lambert, Harrison Arnwijn, Dade Burris, Shaylen Castro, Major Harris, and Nathaniel Perez. The Director of Bands at Mount Pleasant High School is Mr. Keith Lee. Thank you very much.
Did a terrific job, thank you. You may be seated. The first item that we have here is setting the agenda. So I need a motion and a second to adopt the agenda.
Sound moved.
Okay, so we have Pam with the motion and Sam with the second. All in favor, please say aye. Anybody opposed, say no. Okay, that motion passes, we have an agenda that's set. And we'll move on to that first item which is 6.01, recognition of the outgoing Board Members. And we have John Kupicki and Phil Furr. And flowers.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Dr. Kupicki, Members of the Board of Education. And thank you to everyone here and on the live stream for joining us tonight. This evening, we take a moment to reflect on the service and dedication of two exceptional individuals who have contributed to the success of our school district and the students we serve. Tonight, we recognize and express our heartfelt gratitude to Ms. Laura Blackwood Lindsay and Ms. Keisha Sandage, who have concluded their service on the Cabarrus County Board of Education. At this time, I'd like to ask both Ms. Lindsay and Ms. Sandage to come forward with any family members in attendance, and I would invite Dr. Kupicki to join us at the front of the room. First, we honor Ms. Laura Lindsay, who dedicated six years to this board. Laura, your commitment to our students, staff, and families has been evident in every decision you have made and every initiative you have supported. You have shown insight. You have shown insight, determination, and an unwavering dedication to ensuring our schools are a place where every child can thrive. Your pursuit of excellence and relentless support for the well-being of our students and their families have left an enduring impact on our district. On behalf of this board and the entire Cabarrus County Schools community, thank you for your service, your lasting impact, and good luck in your newly-elected role as Cabarrus County Commissioner. Next, we recognize Ms. Keisha Sandage, who has served this board with dedication over the past four years. Keisha, your time on the board with us has been most meaningful and impactful. Your thoughtful insights and unwavering dedication to serving our students and community have greatly enhanced our work and helped to guide our decisions. Your significant contributions and willingness to lead reflect your depth of character. You have been an advocate for children and families in Cabarrus County. On behalf of this board and the entire Cabarrus County Schools community, we're deeply grateful for your service, your perspective, and the leadership legacy you leave behind. Laura and Keisha, as you move forward, please know that your dedication and hard work have made a difference. You have been voices of hope and champions for education, and your efforts have ensured brighter futures for the students of Cabarrus County. As a resident of Cabarrus County, I'd like to personally thank you for your willingness to make Cabarrus County Schools a great place for parents to raise a family. As a former CCS parent and current staff member, thank you for your dedication to always putting students first. Finally, as a former civics and government teacher, I deeply appreciate your commitment to civic service. Since April 1841, members of the Cabarrus County community have come together as a unified board to guide the education of our students. Your dedicated efforts uphold this 183-year tradition of public service, ensuring that our children receive a first-class education and carry forward a legacy of educational excellence in our community. On behalf of the board, the staff, and the families of our district, we extend our deepest gratitude and our best wishes for all that lies ahead. Thank you both for your remarkable service. Let's give them a round of applause as we celebrate their achievements and accomplishments.
The two remarkable individuals, and we thank them for being part of our board through the last several years. We'll move on to our next item, which is our Impact Through Education Awards. Mr. Furr, take it away.
Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, Dr. Kupicki, again, good evening. Tonight, we will present Impact Through Education Awards to students and staff at Bethel Elementary School and Mount Pleasant High School. Our sponsors for the Impact Awards are our friends at Equitable. At this time, I would like to invite our Equitable representative Leo Spardella to join me at the front of the room. Before we get started with the awards, please accept our sincere thanks and gratitude for Equitable for its continued sponsorship of the Impact Through Education Awards. Tonight, we continue our 15th year of honoring those making an impact in our schools with this award. We appreciate your support, and thank you for helping us celebrate and recognize deserving students and staff. We also want to say a word of thanks to our Cabarrus Regional Chamber and the Concord Trophy Center for providing us with the award plaques each month. Now, on to tonight's awards. May I have the Bethel Elementary School Administrative Team come forward, please? Our first honoree from Bethel is Emmeline Cornell. Emmeline, please come forward with your family.
Emmeline exemplifies what it means to be a positive impact on her learning community as a Bethel mingle. She puts her heart and soul into everything she does, trying her hardest in every subject and inspiring others to do the same. It is clear that her potential knows no bounds. But Emmeline's contributions go beyond academics. She has a remarkable ability to connect with both her peers and adults in meaningful ways. It's rare to find a student who takes the time to stop, look others in the eyes, and genuinely ask, "How are you doing today?" Yet, Emmeline does this every day, embodying thoughtfulness and kindness. Her compassion shines in her interactions with classmates. Emmeline goes out of her way to help those who need it most, whether it's students who struggle academically, those who find it hard to make friends, or those who may be overlooked. She sees a need and steps in, not because she's asked, but because she simply is who she is. Emmeline, your kindness, leadership, and willingness to serve others make Bethel Elementary a better place. You set a powerful example for everyone around you, and we're so proud of the impact you've already made. The future is bright for you, and we can't wait to see all the amazing things you will accomplish. Congratulations, Emmeline. You are an Impact Through Education Award winner for Bethel Elementary.
Our next honoree from Bethel is Reagan Green. Reagan, please come forward with your family. Reagan is an extraordinary young leader who has already made a remarkable impact on Bethel Elementary School. Staff share that Reagan is an absolute joy to have in class. She consistently challenges herself to grow and excel, not only academically, but in every aspect of her life. Her ability to apply what she learns to real-life situations demonstrates a level of maturity and wisdom beyond her years. Reagan is a peer helper and co-teacher in K-1 PE classes. She has proven to be a trusted partner and natural leader. Her confidence, communication skills, and leadership abilities are unmatched. She can observe a lesson once and flawlessly teach it herself, captivating the students with her authority and likability. The respect she commands is remarkable, and she has a unique ability to inspire both her peers and the younger students she helps guide. Reagan's influence extends beyond her peers. In fact, a teacher shared during a recent meeting that they would gladly hand Reagan their keys upon retirement, fully confident that she could step into their role and excel. Reagan's future is undoubtedly bright. Whether she chooses to lead a school, a business, a community, or even the country, she has the qualities and determination to achieve greatness. She truly is one of the brightest parts of the school day. Congratulations, Reagan. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Bethel Elementary School. Also from Bethel is Support Staff Member Jennifer Bowen. Ms. Bowen, please come forward with your family. Jennifer Bowen has made an incredible impact on the Bethel Elementary School learning community as an instructional teaching assistant. Her colleagues shared these words, "Jennifer is a cornerstone of our school's success." Her dedication and hard work have made an immeasurable difference in the lives of the students she works with and the teachers she supports. This year, she has been an irreplaceable partner, ensuring small group instruction is meaningful and whole-group lessons are engaging and impactful. Simply put, we would be lost without her. Jennifer's love for her students is evident in everything she does. She doesn't just teach, she nurtures, cares, and inspires. Once you're one of Ms. Bowen's students, you have a lifelong advocate who believes in you. Her passion for student learning drives her to push her students to reach their full potential, knowing their futures depend on the academic growth they achieve today. Her commitment to excellence extends far beyond the classroom. Jennifer approaches her role with professionalism and purpose. She shows up every day on time and ready to tackle the toughest challenges with determination and grace. She uses every instructional moment wisely, taking on difficult tasks without hesitation because she truly wants to make a difference. Jennifer Bowen is not just a teaching assistant, she is a vital part of the Bethel Elementary family. Her knowledge, dedication, and unwavering belief in her students make her an asset we are so grateful to have. Congratulations, Jennifer. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner at Bethel Elementary School. And finally, from Bethel is Teacher Kelsey Lusk. Ms. Lusk, please come forward with your family.
We're honored this evening to celebrate the incredible impact Ms. Kelsey Lusk has made on the learning community at Bethel Elementary School. Over the years, Ms. Lusk has demonstrated her talent and dedication by teaching first grade, third grade, and now fifth grade, leaving a positive and lasting impression at every level. Her colleagues shared these words, "Ms. Lusk is calm, cool, and collected. Her even-killed demeanor creates a classroom environment built on fairness and respect, which her students deeply appreciate. No matter the grade or the challenge, she approaches her work with patience, grace, and a focus on making a difference in the lives of students." Her fifth-grade classroom is a testament to her skill as an educator. She consistently brings together students with diverse abilities, backgrounds, and needs, creating a cohesive classroom family where everyone feels included and valued. Ms. Lusk's keen ability to support students with challenges, ensuring they feel important and connected while keeping the entire class on track, highlights her exceptional classroom management and care. Ms. Lusk's commitment to her students is matched by her leadership and teamwork within the school. She is a hard worker, a compassionate educator, and a wonderful colleague. Whether teaching our youngest learners or guiding fifth graders toward their next big step, she embodies the best of Bethel Elementary School. Kelsey, your versatility, dedication, and unwavering belief in your students are truly inspiring. Congratulations, Kelsey. You are an Impact Through Education Award winner for Bethel Elementary School.
We will now continue with our December Impact Through Education Awards by welcoming Mount Pleasant High School. May I have the Mount Pleasant Administrative Team come forward, please? Our first honoree from Mount Pleasant High School is Sarah Ossetuno. Sarah, please come forward with your family. Sarah Ossetuno has been selected as a Mount Pleasant High School Impact Through Education Award winner. Sarah is a senior student athlete at Mount Pleasant High School, participating in volleyball, soccer, track, basketball, and is also on the girls' flag football team. She is a member of the Beta Club, National Technical Honor Society, Fellowship of Christian Athletes, and a Dream On Three Junior Dream Team. Sarah is currently ranked in the top 10 of her class. In addition to her traditional and college-level courses, Sarah is enrolled in the Teaching Cadet Program at Mount Pleasant High School, where she spends time each day teaching children at Mount Pleasant Elementary School. Sarah is an upbeat, lively, and fun student, always cheering on her fellow students. After high school, Sarah hopes to attend UNC Charlotte to pursue a degree in education with the eventual goal of becoming a high school English teacher in Cabarrus County. Congratulations, Sarah. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Mount Pleasant High School. Our next honoree from Mount Pleasant is Noah Condi. Noah, please come forward with your family.
That's my kindergarten teacher. Greatest teacher ever.
Noah Condi has been selected as a Mount Pleasant High School Impact Through Education Award winner. Noah is a senior student athlete at Mount Pleasant High School, participating in swimming and baseball. He is also a member of the Beta Club. Noah is in the top 10 of his class, proving that students really can do it all. In addition to his classes on campus, Noah is enrolled in several community college classes to earn college credits. At school, Noah is a friend to all and really cares about others. This year, he, along with our other Impact Through Education Award winner, is taking the lead on our Dream On Three initiative to make another student's sports dream come true. After high school, Noah hopes to attend NC State to major in engineering. Congratulations, Noah. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Mount Pleasant High School. Next, from Mount Pleasant is Staff Member Dave Durham. Mr. Durham, please come forward with your family. Mr. Dave Durham has been selected as the Mount Pleasant High School Support Staff Impact Through Education Award winner. Mr. Durham has been a coach and educator at Mount Pleasant High School. This year, he moved from his role in the Yes Center to a teaching assistant position within one of the exceptional children's classrooms. Mr. Durham is a role model for students and staff alike. He is always positive and finds the good in every situation. Mr. Durham previously served as the Assistant Athletic Director for the school and still helps support student athletes regularly. Congratulations, Dave. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Mount Pleasant High School. And finally, from Mount Pleasant is Teacher Anthony Heron. Mr. Heron, please come forward with your family. Mr. Anthony Heron has been selected as the Mount Pleasant High School Impact Through Education Award winner. Mr. Heron was selected for this recognition based on his unwavering support for the students of Mount Pleasant High School, especially those in the Academy of Architecture and Construction. Mr. Heron began teaching later in his professional career, after a successful career as an electrician. Mr. Heron teaches four classes each school day in an effort to help meet the high demand for the electrical program at Mount Pleasant. He has grown the electrical trades program at MPHS from the beginning. In addition to his work inside the classroom, Mr. Heron works to help students find employment and plan for their careers. He takes students to North Carolina Skills Competitions, never says no to anyone, and agrees to help out at nearly every football game. He truly cares about all the students' success. He is all-in, all the time. Mr. Heron, who is also a former chef, often brings in crock pots for lunch and shares his culinary skills with his department. He has helped the last two summers with CTE summer camps, both with culinary and with electrical trades. He always has a smile and a kind word for everyone. Mr. Heron is an example of what all educators should strive to be. Congratulations, Anthony. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Mount Pleasant High School. This concludes our Impact Awards presentations for tonight. Congratulations to all our recipients, and thanks again to our partners, Equitable and the Cabarrus Chamber of Commerce for your partnership. the Cabarrus Chamber of Commerce for your partnership.[595.41][595.41](applause)
All right, we'll move on to 6.03, which is 2024 Holiday E-Card Contest winners.
Mr. Chair, again, members of the board, Dr. Kapiky. Good evening. Tonight, we would like to recognize the winners of this year's 14th Annual Holiday E-Card Contest. I'd like to invite tonight's winners, Chloe, Kayla, Megan, Ayana, Sakana, and Peyton, to please come forward.[648.70][648.70](applause) The Holiday E-Card Contest is sponsored by the CCS Communications Department and our award sponsors, Brian Floyd from Yuari Bank, and Mike Hanslick and Lex Pinnell from Edward Jones Financial. At this time, I'd like to invite Brian and Lex, both CCS graduates, to the front of the room to stand with our winners.[689.61][689.61](applause) The CCS Holiday E-Card Contest allows students from all grade levels to submit entries in one of two categories, traditional and digital. The theme of this year's contest was bright lights, bright futures. Talented artists from across our district submitted more than 100 entries. Six winners, one from each category in elementary, middle, and high school, were then chosen by Dr. Kapiky to represent our district on his official Holiday E-Card communications. Our friends at Yuari Bank and Edward Jones are proud to award each of our winners this year with a $100 savings bond in recognition of your outstanding work. Our partner companies will also be proud to send these Christmas E-cards out to their customers this year to help share your work. Just like art grows more valuable over time, so too will these savings bonds. Yes, you have $100 now, but if you will be patient and hold on to them, they will mature into much more. Thank you for your efforts. The winners of this year's E-Card Contest are, in the digital design category, Chloe Elsashans from Cox Mill Elementary School.[770.32][770.32](applause) Kayla Elsashans from Harris Road Middle School.[787.04][787.04](applause) Megan Grande from Northwest Cabarrus High School.[802.11][802.11](applause) And in the traditional design category, from elementary school, Ayana Air.[816.23][816.23](applause) Which one of these is yours? It's the "A."[826.82][826.82](laughter) There you go. That's what you're supposed to say.[831.11][831.11](applause) Middle school, Sakana Vinkatesh from J.N. Freeze.[841.44][841.44](applause) Did I get that one right? Did I get that name right? Awesome. Congratulations. There you go. And last but not least, Peyton Martin from Northwest Cabarrus High School.[856.63][856.63](applause) Again, thank you all for your participation, and thanks to Yuari Bank and Edward Jones for sponsoring this year's contest.
All right, one more group photo, and everybody push in around here. Here we go, three, one. Yeah, let's turn that art around a minute. There you go. All right, one, two, three. I got you.
All right, those are some amazing artists that we have here in Cabarrus County Schools. Probably difficult to choose, I would imagine. We'll move on to our next one, which is 6.04, which is the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month, and Mr. Williams.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, board members, Dr. Kapiky, and to our viewing audiences here and to those watching the live stream. It is my pleasure to recognize our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for December. We always want to begin with expressing our sincere thanks and gratitude to Mr. Tim Vaughn and Hillbush Ford for their tremendous generosity and continued sponsorship of this wonderful recognition program. Our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for December is Alejandra Rodriguez, a kindergarten teacher at Rocky River Elementary School. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Rodriguez, her family, and any members of the Rocky River Elementary Administrative Team in attendance to please come forward.[996.19][996.19](applause) Ms. Rodriguez, you received 19 nominations from parents at Rocky River Elementary School. Tonight, I want to share one of those nominations submitted by a Rocky River Elementary School parent. That parent wrote, "Ms. Rodriguez deserves special recognition because since day one when I met her and exchanged my child's needs and concerns, she replied to me with an assurance that she will work with him using some strategies and tools that she also shared with me to reinforce at home. Two weeks later, my son started reporting that he was eating at school with the other students. This has been an area that we have struggled with for three years. My son wants to go to school even on Saturdays just to help his teacher. He has grown in confidence and independence in a rapid way. During my first meeting with Ms. Rodriguez, she made me feel good as a single mother by offering her help if I ever need her. She is professional, understanding, and compassionate. She's one of a kind that I can trust with my only child, and the parent says, 'Thank you so much for all that you do.'" I'll also tell you, I can vouch for Ms. Rodriguez because she was my daughter's kindergarten teacher, and four years later, we still talk about Ms. Senora Rodriguez. So, Ms. Rodriguez, thank you for the impact that you have made to teach, engage, and inspire the students in your classroom. Congratulations on your selection as Cabarrus County Schools' Hillbush Ford Teacher of
Thank you, Dr. Williams. We're going to move on to 6.05, which is the Everyday Hero Award winner, and we have Dr. Bowers and Art Whitakers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I could have Ms. Kim Good and any special guests that may be with her in tonight, join us down front, please.[1167.41][1167.41](audience talking simultaneously) Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Kapiky, this evening, we are here to honor and celebrate an extraordinary member of our Auxiliary Services Team. This individual embodies the true spirit of what it means to be a hero. Sponsored by the Great Wolf Lodge, the recipient of this month's Everyday Hero Award is someone who has consistently gone above and beyond, touching the lives of many through acts of kindness, dedication, and selflessness. Our honoree is not someone who seeks recognition or applause, but one who finds joy in making a difference, no matter how big or how small. Whether it's through volunteering countless hours, supporting those in need, or simply motivating others with her unwavering commitment to Cabarrus County Schools, Ms. Good should serve as a source of inspiration for us all. Her tireless efforts have not only brought positive change, but have also reminded us of the power of compassion and the impact that one person can make. It is with great admiration and gratitude that we present this month's Everyday Hero Award to Ms. Kim Good, cost clerk for Cabarrus County Schools' Transportation Department. Joining me here tonight is Mr. Matthew Herlocker, Assistant Director of Transportation for Cabarrus County Schools, and Mr. Herlocker is going to share a few words with you for why Ms. Good was chosen as this month's Everyday Hero Award recipient.
Good evening, Chairman, welcome. Members of the board, and Dr. Kapiky. When transportation appears before the board, we typically focus on the essential task of getting our students to and from school on a daily basis. Tonight, however, I'd like to highlight something just as important, something that often goes unnoticed but plays a crucial role in students' educational experience. I'm talking about the person standing in front of you, Kim Good, and the vital work she does behind the scenes. You see, Kim is responsible for our activity buses, those white buses that take our students everywhere from coast to the mountains. Whether it's ensuring the trip to the pumpkin patch goes smoothly, or making sure our students can attend state playoff games, Kim plays an integral role in making these events happen. In fact, Kim is responsible for more activity buses than some districts even have school buses. When schools struggle finding a driver, Kim doesn't hesitate to step in and drive field trips herself. That's the kind of dedication she brings to her job, because it's that important to her to ensure our students and staff can attend these meaningful events. Her planning and attention to detail are exceptional, and her problem-solving skills are truly remarkable. A great example of this is when we transitioned to a new scheduling software, Kim volunteered to hold training sessions for our school treasurers, helping them better understand the accounting aspects of the new system. She also works closely with our administrators and athletic directors, keeping them informed of any bus changes that may arise. So, the next time you see one of the white activity buses on the road, just know that Kim made it happen. I would even go so far as to say that Kim is perhaps the most important person in a student's life that they'll never know, because without her, they might never have the chance to experience something like Lazy Five Ranch or other incredible opportunities. Congratulations, Kim, on being this month's Everyday Hero recipient. Thank you for all that you do, Kim.[1372.82][1372.82](applause)
Okay, we're going to move on to 6.06, which is intern recognitions, and really a thanks to Pam Escobar for the work she puts into our intern program, but she's here tonight to recognize our students. So, we'll bring you to the podium.
Yes, thank you. Hi, now, can you hear me? Awesome. Thank you so much. I'm just going to have the interns come up to the front of the room, if you're in the room. So, as they're walking up, I just want to recognize all the hard work that they have done this semester.[1468.86][1468.86](applause) Through their work, you're going to come all the way around. Through their work with the internship program, they have learned a great deal about the operations of the school district, and then they're also going to be working on a service project. So, this isn't goodbye. You will come and help us with the fall, or excuse me, with the spring semester interns. But I want to thank you so much for coming, for your dedication. I hope you've learned a great deal. I really appreciate all the insights that you have shared with us. You have taught me a lot, and so I just want to say thank you so much for all that you do. This is, most of you, your senior year, some of you are juniors, so good luck with all the rest of the school year. I'm looking forward to see where you guys end up. So, I'm going to read your names in alphabetical order, then we're going to take a nice group picture, and then you'll get to go and say thank you to all the school board. So, Lily Baron.[1527.65][1527.65](applause) Taylor Bost. Bost, sorry. Taylor Bost. Riley Griffin. Good job. Scarlett Hayberacker? I'm sorry. Adir Kumar? Caleb McCartney.[1556.71][1556.71](applause) Layla Newton.[1560.82][1560.82](applause) Jordan Schaefer.[1565.61][1565.61](applause) Caroline Snyder.[1570.01][1570.01](applause) Adithi Takalapa? Is that okay?[1578.48][1578.48](applause) Okay, there are definitely some people here who did not sign in. Amaya Candula? Good job.[1587.36][1587.36](applause) Aditya Candesami Mohan Kumar? I'm sorry. There you go. Am I missing Stella? No. Shreya. I'm so sorry. Shreya Sackrel, I do not have a certificate, but we will get you one, but thank you for your service.[1613.11][1613.11](applause) Is there anybody else? No, we got everybody. All right, let's, you want a group picture, Mike? Okay, let's do a group picture.
I'm going to also do one out in the lobby, just so everybody knows, in front of the Christmas trees.
Oh, yeah. All right, so you stay here from you over, come this way.
Stay in that line, just come on over, and then you guys know you're in the back.[1639.23][1639.23](laughter) Come forward. All right, you're right between these two. Perfect. Wow, that really actually came together. All right, so I can't see you if you can't see the lens, so make sure your face is in between somebody, and on three, one, two, three. I mean, I got it.
Do we need to take a quick recess so she can take a picture? All right, she's, I said, go ahead without her, so we will move forward to Section 7, which is Approval of Minutes and Personnel Report. So, the first one on that section is 7.01, Approval of the Minutes. So, that is on board docs. You've had an opportunity to review those. Understand that you are not here, you're not held accountable for what the content is, so, but we do need a motion and a second to approve the minutes.
I have a motion. Just a second. And a second. Thank you, Greg. All in favor of approving our work session minutes for November 12th? Say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, the minutes are passed, and we'll move on to the next one, which is the approval of the closed session minutes for November 12th. So, I need a motion and a second to approve those. I did have a question for our attorney. Is there any reason those need to be confidential, or any names or anything that would prevent that from being confidential?
I think I would recommend keeping them confidential for now.
Okay, so your recommendation is keep them confidential?
Yes.
So, we'll need a motion to approve the minutes of keeping confidential.
So.
We have Mr. Tredaway. I guess I can second that, so Rob Walter, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, say no. Okay, those motions. if you could make a positive difference. Those are my comments, and I'll move it on to the Superintendent's comments.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Just a few quick reminders for our community. Again, our Program Choice applicants for the 25-26 school year will close this Sunday, December 15th, 2024. An apparent notification of placement will occur in the online family dashboard the week of February 3rd, 2025. For any questions or information needed, please email programchoice@cabarrus.k12.nc.us or visit the district webpage. As Mr. Walter has just pointed out, our high school exams are scheduled to be administered beginning Monday, December 16th, through Friday, December 20th. Traditional Calendar High Schools will dismiss at 11:30 on December 16th through December 19th. On Friday, December 20th, 2024, all Cabarrus County Schools will have early dismissal. We ask that you please check with your individual school for more information on the specific exam schedules and the early dismissal times on that particular day. The winter break will occur from Monday, December 23rd, through Thursday, January 2nd. All Cabarrus County School facilities will be closed to the public from December 23rd through January 1st, and will reopen on Thursday, January 2nd. Again, a reminder to all of our senior parents, it's time to fill out the free application for federal student aid, better known as the FACA form. Any seniors and their parents who want to see about getting help for paying for college need to fill out the FACA form, and you can now open that online at www.studentaid.gov. Any questions, any help you may need, please talk to your school principals and guidance counselors. Our VEX tournaments are going to be held here this year in Cabarrus County. We currently have plans to host 11 VEX tournaments in North Carolina over the next several months, including four state championships. These tournaments, which account for 83% of all robotics events in the state, will bring teams from across North Carolina to compete in Cabarrus County. While coaches and event partners recruit volunteers, Cabarrus County Schools VEX is seeking additional support from the Cabarrus County community. If you'd like to help by volunteering or sponsoring our program, please reach out to We welcome volunteers of all experience levels and ages, and in 2021, to give you an idea how much this program has grown, our schools had 73 VEX teams. Today, we have over 161 teams in our school system, making up 53% of all the public and private teams in North Carolina. Our goal is to continue to be dedicated and grow this program in Cabarrus County Schools, but we need your help. So for more information on the VEX robotics in Cabarrus County Schools, or to ask any questions, please go to the CCS VEX website, or again, call your school principal for assistance. And then in closing, as we approach the winter break, I want to take a moment to reflect on the incredible journey we've shared throughout the year. It's been a time of growth, learning, and remarkable accomplishments made possible by the dedication of our students, the support of their families, and the tireless efforts of our teachers, staff, and community partners. I'm always reminded of our teachers, our staff, and our community partners, our administrators, our transportation folks, our maintenance folks, all of our support staff, our school nutrition folks, anyone that has an impact on a child in this district that works here, it's an amazing thing to see at every board meeting, when we give out the awards and see the exceptional students and teachers and workers that dedicate themselves to making sure that we are a phenomenal school system, and I'd like to thank all of them for their work and dedication, and I wish them a wonderful, peaceful, joyous holiday season. And again, thank you so much for your service to our students. It is definitely evident and appreciated every time we get together and we witness the excellence in this system, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kapiki. Next item is Board Attorney Comments, William Eisenhower, do you have anything for us?
I do not.
All right, moving right along. So we'll move on to the next section, which is the Report Section. 9.01 is Committee Reports from Board Members, and I have a few things for this. I guess every year in January, we're gonna, we, I guess, publish our list of committees that the board has, the committees that the staff has, that the board members are liaisons to. I think I asked Lori to distribute the listing that was provided to me, does everybody have that? It indicates what type of committee it is, and who is the contact person or responsible person for that. I think there's some tweaking that needs to be done to it, but, and then we've had a number of members that have fallen off, fallen off, so there's several vacancies on some of these committees for liaisons. What I'd like to get is your interest in any of these areas, so we can kind of divvy up the liaison positions and any of the board committee positions before next month, and we'll announce those next month. So if you have questions on it, there's policy 21, 22, and policy 2230 kind of goes over what the committee responsibilities are and how that works for the Cabarrus County School Board.
Mr. Walter, you want us to email you, or how do you?
I would appreciate an email or conference, it's a conversation, I know you've already, you're on, if you want to remain on the committees that you're existing on, please let me know that, but for our new folks, we'll go through. And see, it depends, I think the sheet that we have here tells us what the list of the committee name is, its location and meeting times, what type of committee it is, and then who the contact is for that. So if you need more information on that particular committee, we can get that to you. And then there's some that were on there that apparently have dropped off, we may be adding those back as well. But typically this time, if you're on a committee and you have a meeting, it's your opportunity to share what went on during that committee with the board. The only thing we've had in the last month, I think, was the SBA's conference, so anyone who's attended that and wants to share anything that they learned or gleaned from that conference, feel free to do that at this time. Pam?
I want to say that the conference was in Greensboro, we had an opportunity to attend multiple breakout sessions. One of the breakout sessions that I attended, I was pleasantly surprised to see two of our very own Central Cabarrus High School students representing us, and so it was a session about teaching every child, and they talked about their experiences being in school. So I just, it's a great opportunity to see what other school districts are doing, how successful they are being, what innovative programs they're doing in their schools. It's also nice to feel really good about Cabarrus County Schools in comparison, because we do have a lot of talented people on our staff, and I just, you can't help but be proud of Cabarrus County Schools when you compare us to the rest of the state. So it was a great opportunity. Our new school board members are gonna have training next week through, or this week, I think, actually through that organization. I just encourage you to take advantage of the relationships with people that you get to meet throughout the state, because a lot of them have been serving for a long time, and it's a good opportunity to learn.
Thank you, Pam. I also went to a session with Johnson County, and they were sharing what they did to increase proficiency levels with their students, which I thought was very interesting as well, and so those contacts are important. Anything from you, Sam?
No. I thought, speaking generally, I thought the sessions were not quite as good this year as last year. I found last year's sessions overall better.
Okay, and then the last part I wanted to say is, I mean, we have committees and liaisons, so does the Board of Commissioners, and we are blessed today to have Laura Lindsay, who I guess is our new liaison for the Board of Commissioners. Would you come, be kind enough to come up and say hello, and kind of share with us how that, how your liaison position works, and how we can work together to keep, keep the information flow going back and forth.
Good evening. This is different, different view. I'm happy to be up here with you, Chairman Walter, Vice Chair Mills, and the rest of the team. I'm excited to see all of you up there. I am happy to say that you are not rid of me. I will be the liaison for the county commissioner to the school board, and so I do look forward to working with you guys and being a resource for you. Anytime that you need me, I am available, I think most of you have my information, so I'm truly grateful, and I'm here to help you any way I can.
Appreciate that, and congratulations on being the Vice Chair for the Commissioner.
You too.
Okay, anything else on reports? All right, we'll move on to section 10, which is the process and discussion of filling our board vacancy, and I'd like to set the table a little bit with that. As you know, we have a vacancy, thanks, Laura, just move over to the County Commission. And we were briefed, I guess, last, last time by our attorney, that says essentially it's up to us, there's a policy there on the agenda that kind of shows what, what our responsibilities are and how we fill that. It's very vague, it's kind of up to us, so what we've done over the last week is we've surveyed the board, kind of tried to get, judge their feel for what is the best way to move forward, and some of the, some of the things that came out of that was a desire to use a familiar and understandable process, a desire for some to do something other than a ranked voting ballot that was done the last time, an emphasis to make sure this is a simple and quick process, a desire to make this process fair, transparent, and in compliance with current laws, a desire to encourage public participation, and also be mindful of candidates' time, effort, and feelings going through the process, and then a desire to have quality candidates apply who are supportive, who will support public schools, who have some area of expertise or influence and can help the board, and have an education, I guess, relationship or knowledge and recent experience with Cabarrus County Schools. So we, from that, we came up with a, I think a draft procedure, which I think was distributed to you today as well, but essentially there's five, five elements that we need to work out, and those elements are the timeline for this, what we want in an application, just a resume or cover letter, just anything else other than that, how we're gonna evaluate those candidates, and determine a group of finalists. If we have finalists, are we gonna, what are we gonna ask them to do? Last time we had a three-minute speech, and then what voting method we're gonna use to choose our, choose the person for that vacant seat. And we can also discuss, I mean, the public's been asking some of us, what are we looking for, and what's important to us in personally for filling that open seat? You don't, but that's kind of lays the table here for the discussion, so we can either start and go point by point over these items, or we can kind of go with the draft process that was distributed to you today and talk about that. So with that, I will open it up to anybody who wants to start that discussion.
I guess I'm curious why we're looking at even revisiting this. I thought the process last time worked really well. It was vetted by our attorneys, in fact, it was suggested by our attorneys. I thought that process worked pretty well, and of course, the timeline, I haven't looked at the timeline, that may be different.
Thank you, Sam. Sam, anybody else?
I would just reiterate that I also felt like it's beneficial to the community to use a process that's already been done, so that they're familiar with it, that they understand it. I would think some of the candidates that were interested last time would be familiar with it and could resubmit, so I just think it would be an ease for those all involved to do a process that's familiar. And for those who aren't aware, this seat is a nonpartisan seat, so we have to use a process that's nonpartisan. Similarly, what happened last year when Tim Furr also went to the County Commission, that was a nonpartisan seat, and so we went through this process and came up with that. So I agree with Sam, I think that the public has seen this process very recently, those who might be interested would also be familiar with it, and I think that that just helps for ease with the community. Realistically, this will be the last time we use this process or need a process like this, because the board is now partisan, but the seat that we're filling is a nonpartisan seat, which is why we need a nonpartisan process.
Okay, I appreciate the feedback. Essentially, though, it is our new board, folks have different opinions, there's not a consensus for that, that's why we did something a little different, that kind of took something from the 2017 process and the last year's process, so I don't think everybody's gonna get what they want, or it's exactly identical to what we did last time, but that's okay, we can, we can, as long as it's something that's acceptable for us, and it's gonna get us to the endpoint where we can fill the seat. I did ask William to review it, he did today, and said that that was okay to him, it doesn't violate anything, it works, it's understandable, I guess.
Yes, that's correct. So like, like you said, the policy itself, 2115, which is up on the screen, it's, it's pretty vague, it just says that the person will be appointed by the remaining members, it doesn't set out a process for it. This board, through the years, has used a couple different processes, most recently 2023 and 2017. So I think what Chair Walter has presented is essentially a combination, kind of a hybrid of what we did in 2023 and 2017. I think this is pretty similar to 2023, with the exception perhaps of Item 6, where you go to vote. I think the rest of the process is pretty similar to what we did in 2023. In 2023, we did do a ranked choice voting. That was done to try to avoid a situation where you might have a three-to-three tie that persisted, but if that's not a worry now, then you might not have to go to that ranked choice voting, but I'm comfortable that the process as set out is consistent with your policy, so it's really a board call, how you want to do this.
So we can agree on a consensus, which would be this, this draft, if we don't agree, then somebody's gonna have to come up with something different and make a motion on it, and we'll have to discuss that and see if we can get that to pass. But we have something out there, if you want to make comments on it, Greg, please.
Yeah, just a question, and I apologize for not asking this earlier. Finalists will be nominated by board members as a number four and announced to the public at the January 6th, 2025 work session, but 6A says each one member, each board member will provide a name of a finalist that they would like to fulfill a seat. So that sounds like the process from last time, it was described in four, is a different process, right, or?
It is different, it is different, because before we provided our written finalist to the board chair, those were not publicly released.
Does one of these things not need to be there?
It's exactly identical to what we did last time, but that's okay. We can, we can, as long as it's something that's acceptable for us and it's going to get us to the endpoint where we can fill the seat. I did ask William to review it. He did today and said that that was okay to him. It doesn't violate anything. It works. It's understandable, I guess.
Yes, that's correct. So like, like you said, the, the policy itself, 2115, which is up on the screen, it's, it's pretty vague. It just says that the person will be appointed by the remaining members. It doesn't set out a process for it. This board, through the years, has used a couple of different processes, most recently 2023 and 2017. So I think what Chair Walter has presented is essentially a combination, kind of a hybrid of what we did in 2023 and 2017. I think this is pretty similar to 2023 with the exception perhaps of Item 6, where you go to vote. I think the rest of the process is pretty similar to what we did in 2023. In 2023, we did do a ranked choice voting. That was done to try to avoid a situation where you might have a three-to-three tie that persisted. But if that's not a worry now, then you might not have to go to that ranked choice voting. But I'm comfortable that the process as set out is consistent with your policy. So it's really a board call, how you want to do this.
So we can agree on a consensus, which would be this, this draft. If we don't agree, then somebody's going to have to come up with something different and make a motion on it. And we'll have to discuss that and see if we can get that to pass. But we have something out there. If you want to make comments on it. Greg, please.
Yeah, just a question. And I apologize for not asking this earlier. Finalists will be nominated by board members as a number four and announced to the public at the January 6, 2025 work session. But 6A says each one member, each board member will provide a name of a finalist that they would like to fulfill a seat. So that sounds like the process from last time, it was described in four, is a different process, right? Or?
It is different. It is different because before we provided our written finalist to the board chair, those were not publicly released.
Does one of these things not need to be there?
You're now.
Because you're making, you're getting finalists through this nomination process. What does this, each board member provide a name of a finalist that they would like to fill the seat?
So based on the finalists, if we narrow, let's say we have 20 names and we narrow that to five. It's the five, we announce those, those five names on January 6th. Those five individuals would come and speak to us and then we would vote on the, those, those five candidates. So that's the, what it's referring to.
That's just the actual vote of the five candidates. Each board member will choose one.
Yes. If it's five, if it's two.
That's all I need. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, one way to think about it in four is, you know, instead of nominated, is named.
Again, one of the attempts was to make it a transparent process, so that's why that's there. Mr. Tretaway.
I just, I, I want to reiterate, one of the reasons that we went to the ranked voting last time is exactly what happened on the county commissioners. They couldn't break their tie. That's why, how we lost to them. And I just think that personally, I would like to have the opportunity to have input on all of our finalists, where this particular hybrid here only allows you really to vote on one. I just, I didn't, and I just think the chance of a tie, I prefer the ranked voting. That's my preference anyway. But I appreciate the work that went behind this.
Thank you, Mr. Tretaway. Ms. Freeman?
As I understand, well, first of all, I took part in the last one. I don't remember any of that being made public, except that we were notified to come and speak. Am I correct? As far as anything that went processed before that, that was not made public to anybody. This is the first time that the process has really been made public to, to anybody. The second thing was that the timeline changed because before it was in July. That's a whole different scenario than Christmas time. So we wanted to give, I wanted to give people a little more time for that. The ranked voting, I don't, it was confusing whether people actually voted their first choice, their second choice, their third choice, or they gave points to their first choice, second choice, and third choice. I think that was a little bit confusing. So it possibly was not even a ranked voting. It was a point system. Now y'all can clarify that with me.
Thank William. You ever, you ever saw that? It was a point system. Is that how you describe it?
That's right. So you would rank all five folks, but it was, the way it was is you would rank five for your first choice, four, three, two, one. And so it went down like that. So the highest score won. So you were ranking, at that time, there were five finalists because two of the board members selected or named the same person. So there were only five. So yeah, there was a score of five, four, three, two, one, with five being the highest number of points for who you voted first.
Does that understandable? Again, we haven't had, we haven't had consensus on our two-by-twos. We're trying to put something in the middle. We're not all going to get everything we want. But we need to have something or we can continue to postpone it. But, you know, I'm sure you want, you wanted it to, we wanted to stretch, you wanted more time. Most of the other folks that I've heard from did not want to make this, we want to fill this seat in January. So the only way to do that would be you give a window of about, I think it's nine, nine days from tomorrow or today. Catherine, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I agree with everything on this draft. I'm good with it.
Okay, Greg, do you have any other input?
No, I think I'm, I think I'm satisfied with this draft. The, that time limit, the reason it's December 19th is because staff will not be at work on the 21st. So we're trying to get this done before they leave for Christmas break. So then we have that period of time to evaluate all the applications that were sent.
This process gives board members two weeks to review the applications, the cover letters and resumes that are sent.
I mean, if it helps, Melanie, I'm, I'm okay with that process going closer to the actual meeting date when staff comes back. If that just provides more time for people to get an application in, I don't, I don't know that that's going to make any difference. But I don't know how much time we actually need to review those applications when they come in.
And again, we don't, we don't know how many applications we're going to get. The last two times, we've had almost 20 applications. So there is some, some time that you're going to have to take to, to review that. So you can't typically do that in a day or two. So again, we can have consensus to move forward with this, or we can, somebody needs to make, make a motion.
I make a motion that we accept this draft as a process for filling that open Board of Education seat.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Mills, his second. Thank you, Catherine, for the second. Any further discussion on this particular draft?
I'm just curious why we're changing the process. I don't understand, I understand the timeline change. I'm just not sure, I'd like to hear why the ranked voting, which basically eliminates any chance of a tie, allows all of us to have input for every one of the finalists. I'm not sure why that's not a good idea.
Okay, one of the things I had heard is that it's possible that a person can be chosen without a majority. And this essentially is a majority board. So you'd want the majority to choose the replacement, and that may not happen.
I'm confused. I'm confused. I'm not sure how that, I mean, that get, allows you to give input for everyone. I just, I don't understand. I guess why we, we don't change every process. We, unless it needs to be tweaking, and I just want to know, I don't quite understand why we're tweaking that. I would say it's more than a tweak.
Now, again, it's a new board. We solicit all our board members. They've all provided feedback to me that they're not, a lot of them are not comfortable with the ranked voting for whatever reason.
Respectfully, I'd like to hear from them.
Okay.
Okay. We don't do ranked voting in anything else. I don't understand if, if public, public-wise, any, any voting that I know of, we don't do ranked voting. Can you show me an example of where ranked voting is used as, as just the rule?
Well, first of all, I would argue we have an even number. So our chances of ties are much higher. That would be awkward. We only have to go back to the county commissioners recently to see how awkward that could be. So I think that's another reason, that was a major factor in why we did that, was our attorney at the time suggested that we go ranked voting so everyone could vote. The chances of a tie are almost minuscule. But that's, that's why, this is a little different. If we had an odd number, I would, I would hear your point. And about the confusion, I mean, there are three of us that were involved in that process on this side. I don't think there was any confusion about whether one was good or five was good. I don't, I mean, there wasn't any confusion that I was aware of, anyway. I'm just not sure, I'm not sure why we're changing. I guess I, I don't.
Pam?
And I think also one of the thought processes the last time was, we, we just had a vote last week, right, about Chair and Vice Chair? And you have to do an up or down vote on people. And I just, for the people who are applying, who are putting themselves out there, when you do a ranked voting, you're not necessarily exposing them to that process. And, you know, I, I appreciate the time and effort it, it takes to make yourself available and to be part of this process. And so I don't, my goal is not to embarrass anyone or make anyone feel uncomfortable. And I think the ranked voting, doing it that way, everybody has, on our end, has the ability for input. But then also, everybody has the ability to receive support and from multiple people. And so again, for people who are going through the process, who are making themselves available, ranked voting, I just think is a little bit more respectful than an up and down vote.
Okay, appreciate the comments. Anybody else who hasn't commented?
Yeah, I don't, I don't mind saying that part of my goal in this process was to, was to simplify it some. So being on the applicant side of this last time, I felt that the process was a little bit convoluted. I wanted this to be as straightforward as possible. This isn't as simple as I would have wanted it. But it is, I think, where we can get the most agreement. On the ranked choice specifically, I think it should be fairly easy. You nominate the candidate that you want to go into that position, and then we have a vote on those candidates. If there is two candidates and there happens to be a tie, then there is an opportunity to have more discussion and have a revote. I don't know how likely that is. Probably what will happen is there'll be more than two candidates in there. And if, if somebody is, if there's multiple votes going to different candidates on the revote, you'd have just the two, the two highest placing candidates. And those people who had voted for other candidates are going to have to move their vote to those two anyway. So there's opportunities to break, there's opportunities to break ties. I just, I'm not sure that's even that big of a, of a possibility, but I think we've got a method here to deal with it. Like I said, for me, I just wanted this to be less convoluted. I want it to be easy for everybody to understand. And again, this is, like you said, this is the last time we're going to go through this process. So, well, unless one of the other nonpartisan members comes off before the end of their term.
Thank you, Greg. Melanie?
Is there any reason not to have a closed vote either way? I mean, it was a closed vote. I mean, not closed as in, but on paper.
Closed vote, you're meaning?
I, I mean, a paper vote, so it won't be an up or down, like with the Chair and Vice Chair. It would just, it would be a paper vote.
The board policy allows for a paper vote, but those votes have to be.
Then that takes away, to me, the embarrassment issue because only one person is going to get the Chair anyway. So there will still be disappointed people. So I think a closed, just a paper vote, unless we're going to offer comments publicly about why we want our candidate, which did not happen the last time.
It didn't happen the last time because you didn't get down to two. Because of the ranked voting, there was a clear winner and we didn't have to have discussion. And we didn't have to sit there and defend or put down people who have made themselves open to this process. So I understand that you don't necessarily understand why we did it last time, but it, it is in an effort to be respectful.
I just don't see why this is disrespectful. I guess that's my, my point. If we have the paper ballot and, and we do it the same way, I don't see anything disrespectful about it.
If the vote comes down to a tie, we will have to have a discussion in, in a public forum. That's why.
Let's go through the chair on, on the back and forth. But Melanie, you done speaking? Pam, did you want anything else? Okay, the last thing that they had, we had on here is, anybody wanting to share what, what you're looking for? What is important to you and the person, and the person who fills the open seat? Anybody want to add anything to that at this time? Pam?
I just want to encourage people who care about this school system, who care about our kids, who have a vested interest in, in what happens to our kids and in our society, to, to put forth an effort. It's, it's really important that you have people who are sitting here who care. And I appreciate, again, anyone who takes the time to do this. To serve is not easy and it is time-consuming, but it is good work and it's fulfilling work.
Those are good comments. Thank you. Since this is not on Board Docs, let me read it. Whoops, Greg, go ahead.
Sorry, I would also like to say, having observed this board for several years now, and I feel like I was pretty well aware of the work that this board does. Being on the inside of it, let me reassure you that it is a lot of work. And so whoever is applying for these positions, we, we need people who are committed to the mission of education here in Cabarrus County. So whatever other agenda you might have, save us the time of putting in your application. We need people who are committed to this mission. And I would just encourage you to, to consider the amount of work that is, and the amount of your time it's going to take to do this job well.
Thank you, Greg. Anybody else on this side? Catherine?
I just want to go back to the comment about the ranked voting. You know, I don't want hurt feelings either, but those votes were made public. So I'm sure the candidates that received ones had hurt feelings. So I, I don't see how any process is not going to hurt some feelings. But I go back and agree with Melanie, if we put, if we do a paper vote, that would, to me, that would be better than doing a ranked voting.
Mr. Tretaway?
Yeah, respectfully, a paper ballot is exactly what we did. We gave them to the, the attorney. He went outside, he counted them, and he came back. So if we do a paper ballot, it's still going to be counted. It's still going to be public. It has to be by law. So that's, that's not going to change.
Melanie, then, Greg?
I was just, my comment was in reference to Pam's, that the ranked voting somehow did not diminish people as much. That was all I was talking about. So it was not an up and down vote, which I thought she was saying was like our, because she referenced the Chair, which was an up and down verbal. That was my comment for that.
Greg, last word.
We have a motion and a second. I'd like to call the question.
Okay. Everybody's had a chance to speak. I do want to read this because it's not on Board Docs. So it'll be published in Board Doc shortly and, but here it is. So we've got a process for filling the open CCS Board of Education seat, number one. The board vacancy advertisement will be published after the December 9 business meeting. So essentially tomorrow, December 10. Individuals interested in applying will provide a cover letter and an attached resume. Number two, application packages will be due by mail, hand-delivered to the Ed Center, or by email to the board clerk by December 19th. So that's a nine-day period before the holiday. Number three, applications will be scanned by the board clerk and sent to each board member on Friday, December 20th, to review and evaluate over the holidays. It's essentially a two-week period to review the applications that we receive. Number four, finalists will be nominated by, by the board members and announced to the public on January 6 work session. Finalists and those selected will be officially notified by email on the next day, January 7th. So those folks will have about a week. So number five, finalists prepare and give a presentation to the board at the board meeting on January 14th. Public will also have an opportunity to weigh in during public comment period before a vote is conducted. Number six, vote to select an individual to fill the unexpired term for the board vacancy. This will occur after public comment and discussion on January 14th. The voting method to be used will be similar to the method used in 2017. A, each board member will provide a name of a finalist they would like to fill the seat. B, if the same individual is named by all four, by four board members, the voting is concluded. C, if four votes are not earned by the candidate, by a candidate, another round of voting will take place with just the top two names or three names if there's a tie. Kind of like a Survivor thing, right? So, and then D, in the event of a tie or lack of a majority on the second round of voting, a board member will need to make a motion that that particular individual filled the vacant seat. Another board member will have to provide a second to that motion. The board will then vote yes or no on the individual as a typical motion that we do here is considered. And then seven, once a new board member is selected, if not already done by motion, a motion will be requested to accept the chosen individual to fill the unexpired term of the vacant seat and have that person complete the oath of office and take the seat at the work session on February 3rd. So that's what the motion is. That's where we're at. So we will.
Could I ask one clarifying question?
Yes.
On 6B, this is more of a legal, I guess, clarification. If the same individual is named by four board members, voting is concluded. That would not be a nomination. That would be a vote which is a public record, right?
It's a nomination. It was a nomination. You'd have to still have a motion to accept that.
Yeah, I think you would still have to have a vote.
Okay, that's what I was, I guess.
The voting is concluded, but you'd still need a motion. Pam, yes?
I'm just confused. Is a nomination a vote? That's what we're confusing here, aren't we?
Yeah, so there's two different things though, because you would have your, your choices after you review the packages and you would have those folks. But then you're, you're going to listen to the public comment. those folks, um, but then you're, you're going to listen to the public comment, you're going to listen to their presentations, and just because you picked someone to come forward, you know, you might not vote for them. I mean, we had that, the, the last time around, you, you, just because you put their name forward, um, you know, you keep an open mind, you listen to the public comment, you listen to their presentation, you might vote for someone else. So the, I, I think there would need to be an actual vote at that time.
A vote for what?
Um, well, I think you'd, you'd present their names, and I think what they did in 2017, if we're going to be consistent with that, is you would, I would pull the names out, um, with a random order, and we would go through each name of the people who present. So say, John Smith was the first one, we would have John Smith, and then we would have an up or down vote on John Smith.
Okay, that was not what we, what's written down here, what's written down here is, each board member would pick, would, would give us a name of a finalist that they'd like on that seat, and if there are four of them, there's a majority. If there's not, there will be a second round, uh, of voting, and then if that doesn't result in a person, then we'll have a up or down vote.
I guess I'm trying to get the distinction between who you select to be your finalist, and then won't, that, that's not necessarily the same person that you vote for, it could, could very well be.
That is not, all the, what we're trying to do is narrow the list of applicants, so if you have 20 applicants, it doesn't make sense to hear from 20 people, so the board members will have an opportunity the week before to say...
Yes.
These are the people that, after reviewing their application, talking to them, whatever, they should be finalists.
That, I, I, that makes perfect sense, so those six people, four people, two people, I, I was assuming they would be the two, or four, or six that come to the January 14th meeting, but then at the January 14th meeting, after you've heard, then that's when you would vote.
We're going to vote to fill the seat on the 14th, yes.
I guess what we're trying to ask is a point of clarification, so what you've just described is, uh, point four, but the question that we're having is, um, 6B, what does that look like? And then also, what you, and 6C, for me, you said one thing, but what's written is another, so can you clarify what voting will look like in B? And then C, if there are three names, where is that included in this, in this, um, document?
If there are three names, as far as...
You said, you said it, you didn't, it's not written, you said that if there were three names, it would be like Survivor, so I'm just asking you, can you clarify that? And if, if you are changing the document that you're presenting, and that was motioned, can you give us a clarification and update or amend what you've written? Also, can you clarify what you mean by B? What is, what does voting look like under your scenario?
Okay, it wasn't three if there's a tie, so if somebody has two votes, somebody else has two votes, and somebody else has two votes, there's a three-way tie.
But you have there written two names, not three names.
And ties. Oh, well, there's a type of, thank you. And what does vote, what does voting look like, again? We're going to go, we're going to, each board member will be able to provide a name of, of the person they would like to fill that seat, after the interviews, after public comment. Yes?
Is it possible, because I think this, the snafu is other, that B, um, can we strike B? And, and we just take a vote, rather than saying, if, if the same individual is named by four, four board members, voting is concluded, can we just strike that and say, you know, and just, just leave it with the A, C, and D?
Yes, the process for that is, you'd want to amend the motion that's out there. But, uh, again, I'll let Greg, he made the motion, so...
I, I made the motion, so I need to amend it?
No, you need to amend it.
If that moves this forward, so that we can, uh, finish this discussion, I'm happy to entertain the amendment.
Is there a, a second to amending that, or...
I sec, I, can I second?
You can't second, you have somebody else...
I didn't think so.
Want to remove, which letter are you removing?
Just, just the B.
Remove the B.
Uh, yeah, I think that works, and I think it, it simplifies it to, um, clarify, um, because like I said, I, I think the intent was that you, you have your finalists that you, um, select at the January 6th meeting, those are notified January 7th, but then there'll be an up or down vote, um, at the January 14th meeting. Now, I guess there's still an open question, do you want to do that by written ballot, or do you want to do it by voice vote? You, you have the option to do either one. Now, if you do the, the paper ballot, the, the one concern I would have is, unlike with the ranked choice voting, it could be that when we go to tabulate it, um, there is a tie, then we would have to come back. Um, not, not a major issue, but there could be some back and forth there, as opposed to the voice vote, um, where you would know at the time, um, or ranked choice, which kind of avoids that issue.
Okay, right now, there's a motion to remove B, and if I, do we have a second for that one?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to amend the, amend the original motion. So all in favor of removing B, say aye. All opposed, say no. No. Okay, so that amendment doesn't pass, we're back to the original motion now. If somebody wants to add the written ballot, you can try to amend the motion again, otherwise let's, we ready to vote for this?
I move to have a written ranked ballot.
Okay, we have a, a motion to amend the original motion, to add a written ranked ballot. Anybody second that?
I second.
We do have a second, okay. So let's vote for that. Um, those in favor of amending the, uh...
I have to agree to entertain that amendment, but I had to agree to entertain the other one.
I think you can help me with that, but, uh...
I think this is, at this point, a separate motion, because that, that motion was already voted upon and failed. So I think what Pam has done now is, she has a new motion on the table and a second.
I didn't, I didn't, my question is, how is that different from what Melanie was doing? And why was I asked for some kind of confirmation for what Melanie was ammending?
Well, because I think you were, you were proposing to accept this, and then that you entertained the motion to strike out B. Um, this is just, and that we had a motion and a second and a vote.
Giving you an opportunity for, I was giving you an opportunity for feedback, so...
Yeah, so now we have another motion and a second, so unless there's discussion or comment, then I think we would have a vote on that motion.
So, point of order, since I did call the question, are all of these amendments out of order?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to add a written ballot. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. No. Okay, that motion fails. All right, now we're back to the original motion. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, that is a 4-2, that motion passes, so we do have a procedure to fill our, our vacant seat, and that'll be published tomorrow. So, we have moved through that one, we get to talk, have our guest speaker portion of the meeting, and instead of reading this to our public, we have asked, uh, our speakers to sign an agreement abiding by these terms that are in the, in the agenda, and I only had one speaker sign up, so, Brian Mead, are you here?
Yes, sir.
Welcome. Please approach the podium. You say you're speaking on behalf of a group, so you have up to five minutes to speak?
Yes, sir.
And you can, well...
My name is Brian Mead.
You gotta hit the, you gotta hit the microphone, make sure there's a red light on it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, boy, my name is Brian Mead, uh, speaking behalf of the bus drivers, um, we have some concerns, um, our mission, uh, is to empower students to build their, uh, futures. The drivers is committed to the safety of each student, we also take pride in bringing students to and from school. Um, some of the concern, I know I ain't going to have enough for five minutes, but I'm going to read some of the things that our concerns is. Uh, no pay for school closure for inclement weather, sometimes icy conditions lasting a week or more. No work offered on teacher planning days, and forced to use leave to maintain a steady salary. No access to school buildings before 6:00 AM to use the restroom facilities prior to the routes. The zone art equipment, which randomly does not operate, causing an inability to clock in and out. Too short time of eight minutes to clock in and pre-check vehicles for road worthlessness. When mechanical problems occur, bus routes become late, and students do not arrive to school on time. Parents consistently attempt to control drivers calculated based on inaccurately assessed hours. Although management refers to these routes contracts as agreements, they bear signatures from both manager, management and drivers, reflecting a contractual obligation. However, the terms do not accurately represent, uh, the workload, leading to insufficient compensation and support. We also wish to address the issues of attendance-based bonuses. We understand the need to incentive regular attendance, yet the current system lacks empathy in extraordinary circumstances.
Mr. Mead, do you have anything in writing you can share with us?
Yes, thank you for your attention, uh, board, and for this matter.
So you have something in writing you can share with us?
Yes.
Uh, the board clerk right there, would be the, Ms. Fur, Ms. Fur there?
Sure.
Thank you for coming and sharing.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to the approval of the consent agenda, and again, this is a list of items we're going to vote as a package that we reviewed last week, so I would need a motion and a second to approve our consent agenda. A motion by Mr. Treadway. Thank you, Pam, for a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, our consent agenda has passed. So we have one action item on our agenda, and that was from last week, and that is 13.1, is the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment for Coltrum Web Elementary School Beverly Hills Site Work Bid Package, and Mr. Brian Coon, welcome back.
Thank you, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Kapicki, so yes, last week I presented to you, uh, the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment for Bid Package 31A, which is the complete site work for the Coltrum Web's Beverly Hills STEM Replacement School project. It was in the amount of $7,165,477. I did not receive any questions throughout the week, uh, so at this time, I'd just like for you to take action on this request, please.
Do we have any questions or comments for Mr. Mills?
Yeah, I just want to say, um, thank you for the additional information she provided, that was very helpful.
Yes, thank you.
And as I understand it, there's a couple dozen more of these bids coming through, there'll be plenty of opportunities for me to get a better handle on how the system works, and I appreciate your cooperation.
Yep, yeah, more than happy to, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so I'll need a motion and a second of the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment. Site work bid package be approved as presented.
So move.
A motion by Mr. Treadway. Thank you, Catherine, for the second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed, say no. Okay, that motion passes 7-0, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Coon, that's all we have for the, on our, on our agenda, so at this point, we need a motion to adjourn.
Send it.
Ms. Escobar's motion to adjourn, we need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Treadway. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed, say no. Okay, at this point, uh, we're going to say goodnight to our viewing audience, and we'll see you next month.